Open the first public hearing. And this public hearing is on village. Village of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulations. It is to, I'm hoping we'll get a motion to send these village standalone regs that we worked on that would replace Article Six in the Village of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulation document. Any public comment on?
Do we get to review them?
I don't, I'm not gonna review unless the public wants to. Are you the public, you want me to review all of them?
Am I the public? I don't know.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Do you know how to review all of them?
Well, there was only a few, maybe not all of them, but uh, I was hoping that Jason would be here to.
He's gonna be here. He's just not here yet. He told me he was definitely gonna be, he's definitely gonna be here.
So, yes, so like the chart in section five point one or five point two has some questionable, has multiple choices, so to speak, permitted and conditional, so I wanted to just review those.
Okay, I'm just having trouble getting online here.
Let me try to see.
Put it back on your notes.
I'm busy.
Okay, put it on your notes. Hey, Jason. Jason, how are you?
Good, how are you?
We already did open the public hearing and Jared has some, some things he wants to review in the flood hazard regulations, but I'm just having trouble getting on line here. Do you need a password? Does Brendan know it? You got the password. Oh, you got the password? Yeah, two point four, right?
Yeah, but you can also be using, if you, uh, can you pick up the Ludlow T O L?
Can I say?
Uh, auditorium wifi.
T O L auditorium?
Yep.
Do you have the password?
Ludlow O six.
Same as the other one?
Yeah.
With a capital L, no lowercase?
Lowercase. We have very high security.
Okay, now let everybody know. Please work.
They also said the meeting was supposed to be upstairs.
I know, but I put a sign up because.
Too cold?
Jared, it was freezing up there and Jared had us all set up here, so. Jared, can, um, Jason, can you bring up those flood regs? I don't know why, but I cannot get on line here. Ludlow auditorium. Sorry about that. I'm gonna still keep trying. Hello, how are you, Mr. Ellison, Frank?
Mr. Ellison.
How you doing?
My name is Steve.
Is it five? It's a little seven. O six.
Still live in that house. Yeah.
He was just saying goodbye, Ken. I joined.
You joined?
Yeah.
Let's try turning it off.
Yeah, that might help. I knew.
So, we're just going to go with flood hazard regulations that are gonna be after even separate document, apart from our other bylaws. Um, that's why you made it a little preview of other documents.
It says it has weak security.
We're gonna, actually, we're gonna, I guess, vote on whether or not to adopt what we've already talked about, right?
I wrote down, she said, send it on. Vote to send it on.
Oh, send it off to trustees and.
Mm-hmm. For their public hearing, yeah.
This is just to hear.
And interested parties.
We're waiting for Jason to bring it up because I'm just not having any luck here.
You joining on Zoom?
I am attempting to. I gotta get connected to the wifi and.
Are you having the same issue?
Well, my computer's just starting up, so, um, I missed the instructions. Is it Ludlow?
T O L auditorium and.
That's the one?
I got it on twenty-four.
Yeah, Ludlow two point four, two point four. The password's Ludlow O six.
Oh, is it two point one?
It came up for me right away.
Whatever, it's a better signal.
Too bad I didn't have my computer.
What's the password?
Ludlow O six.
Zero six.
Lowercase, all of it. I haven't gotten online before, I swear.
I know, you do this every month.
Connecting.
Connected.
That was good, right? There's no internet.
It says no internet.
Do we have a paper copy we could draw a read from?
That's what Jerry has.
You're on the auditorium, two point four, I see the auditorium.
Are you on Eric?
No, trust me.
Sarah, are you on?
She's got your phone.
No, not my phone.
So, the internet's just not working?
But I'm connected on.
That's connected.
You're on, can I just answer?
No, no, mine says, does not appear to be connected to the internet.
Ludlow auditorium. Jared, why don't you just tell us what your plans are, what your, what your issue is?
So, other than chart, here we have, um, in, um, I believe it's going to now not be a section or an article, but it's just, um, section one statutory authorization in effect, two purpose, three summary table is the one that I'm looking for. So, Roman numer three, summary table, development review of hazard areas. So, it's a chart that says, uh, for instance, new structures in the river corridor conditional in the special flood hazard area conditional and floodway not allowed. Um, when we get down to replacement water supply or septic systems, um, it has permitted and conditional in the, um, the river corridor, um, for that, as well as filler grading resulting in a loss of flood storage, um, and then going down the list. Um, there's a couple of more ambiguous ones where is it permitted or is it conditional? And, um, is that up to the zoning administrator to decide?
What page in the document are you on?
Uh, this is page two, and the new standalone flood regs.
Okay, but it's, it's not part of the whole, um, village zoning document?
This is the new one that we're gonna adopt, so no, it's not part of the old Article Six. So, we can have river corridors that we do now.
We definitely left some of the things up to the planning administrator to decide. We did that intentionally.
So, we'll see, if I could, um, the set, the following section, starting on page four, this is, uh, is supposed to inform that, um, section as well. So, that, that section, um, starts to talk about, um, the administrative review and where that kicks into play and some of the exempt activities. Uh, so hopefully that answers some of those questions where there's a P and a C. Okay, so I see under, under, um, I guess, uh, the section five, page four, R C jurisdictional determination, uh, number two, if uncertainty exists with respect to the boundaries of a flood hazard area, the location shall be determined by the administrative officer. There's really the same thing about the chart. Um, that is referenced in, um, will be called section three summary data. So, you have this section, so right below that, there's number two, starting on page five, there's exempted activities. And so, that's attempting to spell out in a little more detail the things that are in the chart, um, listed as A, for example. Um, and then below that, administrative review, following development activities in the special flood hazard area. Um, may receive a permit from the A O, that's zoning administrator, um, without review by the D R B. And then it goes to list those activities. So, my hope is that that list there would help to understand that table.
Yeah.
Can, can we add something like, please refer to section five for more detail or, I don't know, like a little asterisk down at the bottom?
Can we do that, Jason? I have no problem doing that.
There's no problem to do that now.
Okay.
Are there gonna be copies of this to see, somebody like me I've never seen?
Yeah, they're definitely, they're all online, Frank, every time that we have a public hearing. They've been online for fifteen days on the town website.
Okay.
And, um, we don't have, he didn't make copies of all of these documents because there's pages and pages and pages long. It would have been, our book list would have been this thick. But you can get access on the, online at the town of Ludlow website. Look under our agendas and under planning commission and you'll see the flood hazards that we're talking about right now. The only thing I wanted to, Jason, Jared, are you happy with that?
Um, that's, that's fine, so.
Did you have anything else?
Um, I guess we have to cross that bridge when we get to it.
Well, we're in the middle of the flood hazard stuff and I wanna move on to something else in the zoning.
So, in the event of an actual application, um, is what I'm referring to, saying, well, how do they cross that bridge? We have two options. Refer to the section that Jason just mentioned and then have the administrative officer make that decision.
Okay, was, did you say you needed a definition also added?
No, I was just curious, in the event at some point we did, um, not for this one in particular, but more for the Article Two, next meeting or the meeting after the signing.
Okay.
Section two twenty, section two thirty.
Okay, and the only thing I had was when we talked about, um, when we started working on the town zoning, section two twenty-seven, Brian, you'll probably remember this, when we talked about, um, the town and village, section two twenty-seven, we noticed something in the village that we wanted to change. Um, we wanted to change, section two point seven is on certificates of occupancy. Um, a certificate of occupancy issued by the zoning administrator shall be acquired prior to the use of occupancy of any land or structure or part thereof, um, for which a zoning permit has been issued. We wanted to add except for home occupations with no structural changes. And we didn't add that at our, when we, you know, scheduled this public hearing, we kinda forgot that part. And I went through all of the minutes, come on in Ted, I went through all of the minutes and found that we had made that slight change. And so, I wondered before we send it to the public hearing for the village trustees, if we could add that in, um, along with the standalone flood, flood hazard, um, you know, the new standalone flood prevention rules.
So, yes, so what would, the actual language you'd be adding is just for home occupation?
Yeah, it was, you would, I wanted us to add it to the village. Cause when we looked at the, the town zoning and we made the changes we had made to the village.
Yep.
You noted that we needed to add that. So, I just wanted to have this board send that along to the village public hearing, um, the changes would be to section two twenty-seven. Does anyone from the public have any comments on the, either what I just said, the section two twenty-seven or on our flood hazard, flood prevention standalone?
Yes.
Yeah, Frank?
Everything you told me was online and pages, pages, this new, like, planned addendum. Is that online or can I get a copy of that?
Yeah, it's online. Um, Frank, I'll tell you what we did. We, Jason came up with a Vermont standalone flood, a whole section on flood prevention. And we took a look at it and we put it alongside what we already had in Article Six, which is in our village zoning already.
Yeah.
And we tweaked it because Ludlow had, um, twenty-two inches water in places. That one said one foot above the ground and so we, we changed that to two feet. We made some changes to go with our village and our particular situation. But a lot of it, um, the charts were very similar. We combined a couple charts. We worked on it for months, um, this summer, this last summer, two thousand twenty-four. And, um, actually, when I went through and read all the minutes, we also said we were gonna replace the, replace the town with that one too. We had made a motion to do that, but I wanna wait and do that when we talk about town zoning because it's part of the municipal planning grant, to take a further look at that and make sure that's all cohesive today.
So, this is, this, this new addendum is to the zoning is, is still something that's gonna be looked at by trustees and.
Yes.
And other voters too?
Yep, they're gonna, yep, it's gonna go to their public hearing next. So, they, and changes can be made at that public hearing as well as ours. And they often make changes before they'll accept, you know, we make proposals.
If I wanted to add anything to it or review them and make a comment on them, should we have the trustee meeting or this?
Yeah, definitely, yep. And I'm hoping to plan that for like April because it's too quick a turnaround from our meeting to their meeting.
Yeah, I know, so.
So, um, so to even warn it on time.
I think.
Yeah, trustee's meeting in April, I believe, is village meeting.
Okay.
I.
Oh, you're thinking of, um, I know what you're thinking, the town meeting for the village?
Not town meeting.
No, the village meeting is twenty-seventh of March.
Okay.
On that note, I'm also trying to, I have a, a question into the, of League of Cities and Towns to see if we can do all of that at the same meeting. Cause Rose is thinking and the planning office is thinking, we have to have like four different meetings because it's so many different documents we're gonna be looking at. So, I do have a question, they haven't gotten back to me yet, um, even though I put urgent on it, it's like three weeks ago, um, to see if we can do that all at one meeting, as long as we had a quorum of trustees and a quorum of selectmen, if we can just get it all hashed out in one meeting, which I think they would appreciate instead of going to like four meetings on these like three different documents. But the thing is, when we talk about, well, later on, we'll get into that. Are there any more comment, public comments on the flood standalone prevention?
I have a question. Are we gonna be, um, importing any definitions from the town and village bylaws to the separate flood hazard regulations that are not in there now?
We took an intensive look at that this summer, Jared, to make sure nothing was missing. Cause they, it obviously came with a sound set of definitions.
Yeah, that relate to a lot of flooding things, but then there are secondary issues that go back to just regular zoning bylaws.
But would they be in the regular lawsuit at the end?
They would, but separating the flood regulations from the other bylaws, um, kinda indemnifying definitions from each other.
They're pretty intensive. Did you take a look at them?
Yeah.
Yeah, did you find some missing?
Um, I can't say that I have.
Okay, well, maybe if you, you know, if you wanna take an intense look at that, that could also be changed at the village meeting. If you come, you know, someone, or something, cause we did take a really good look at those.
Might, might wanna add something a little, little, little more detail, um, with regard to accessory structures in the flood. And this and that.
Okay. I'll take a look at that too.
What really constitutes certain aspects of the building envelope and what's contained inside of it. Um, we have, um, uh, a consideration now concerning connectors between buildings. And I think it carries not only across the town and village bylaws, but also should carry to the flood regulations.
Okay.
If there's even a reference to go back to the town and village bylaws from the, from the standalone flood regulations, that might be beneficial too.
Yeah, we did go back and forth, cause we wanna make sure nothing was missing.
But, you know, as long as, as long as somebody doesn't say, well, this document doesn't say what, you know, the other definition is, so it doesn't hold true for my building because it's in a special flood hazard area, you know?
So, basically like a note, like C, you know, section one, blah, 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 or something like that in parentheses? Is that what you're talking about?
Or maybe even something, if any questionable definitions should, you know, also check the town and village bylaws. Just something to not totally separate, segregate these definitions from those definitions, even if a few were copied. Just to let it be known that there's another resource out there and we like to use that as well.
So, that could just be a line possibly, like in the beginning or end, like this is, please reference town and village.
Jason, did you see any gaps like that? I know we really looked at both.
Now, it's been a few months.
Yeah, it has been. We're doing June and July, I think, in May.
So, so people know for good or for bad, these, um, proposed new flood regulations are from state Department of Environmental Constations model bylaws. So, it's pretty much their model bylaws and then we modified them a little bit. We were looking at what you have currently, this, we made a few tweaks. But generally speaking, these are the definitions that, um, came with the model. Um, there are some differences in the flood definitions, like development means something slightly different for flood regs than it does in zoning. So, there's always been a little bit of weirdness anyway with them being in one document together. I'm sure that there might be some context that's missing, so we could add a little, sort of some sort. We'll have to think carefully about the, the, the different, like, development definitions. I think there's another one that's like that. So, I'll have to think a little bit about that.
Okay.
We could add some kind of a comment at the beginning of the definition section that relates back to what Jared was talking about.
What we liked about these, the standalone too, was it was already vetted because it came from the state. And we also had those two guys here, were they from FEMA?
They were from, uh, D E C, Department of Environmental.
And they checked our entire document before they came and they said even the tweaks we made were completely legit and, you know, passed the muster, so to speak. Is there anything else at this public hearing that people wanna bring up? About flood, the flood protection section, it's gonna now be a standalone section. We'll undertake a motion to, um, send the change to section two twenty-seven of village zoning and also send the standalone flood regs to the village trustees for public hearing. So moved. Any seconds?
A second.
Any discussion?
Town meeting is March, so I guess we wouldn't be doing the select board. Oh, you're going village trustees, okay.
Yeah, there's not even fifteen, there's not even fifteen days.
Yeah.
Between, and we have to, you know, warn it in the journal. Okay, um, I'll call the vote. I was a favor of the motion to send, um, section two twenty-seven of village zoning and the standalone flood regs to the village trustees for a public hearing. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, now I will close the public hearing for the village flood regs and open up the public hearing for the town of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulations changes. We made changes to sections two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four and two twenty-seven. So far, we're doing a complete overhaul of village zoning, um, of the town zoning, I mean. But these are the sections that we worked on from like August to, um, November so far. And, um, are there any questions about those sections, two twenty, two twenty-one, two twenty-four, two twenty-seven? Does the public have any input on those sections? They were available on the town website. I can, I can't bring them up because the internet's not working here, but.
Uh, yeah, town, yes, town zoning.
Town zoning, yep. We basically, Frank, just so, to let you know the background on this, we basically had to make a bunch of changes to village zoning, which got okayed by the village trustees on September twenty-third and became, um, like September sixth or something, it became, um, went into effect September twenty-third. And so, we took a look at the town zoning and made the exact same changes because they were based on state changes that the state had made. And so, we made the same changes to the town zoning that we had made to the village zoning in those sections so far. And then the other part is of this public hearing, are there any questions or comments on those sections from the public? Okay, I'm gonna move on to the subdivision then. We took a look at the town and village of Ludlow subdivision because we're anticipating applying for a special designation called neighborhood development areas, which would allow people to build housing without having to go through Act two fifty and also we would have some preferential treatment as far as grants for affordable housing with this designation for our village. And so, we had to make some changes. We went to the village trustees and the select board to see what changes they would be comfortable with us making. We had a, like a list of changes we had to make. And, um, the ones that they picked were in Article Four of the subdivision regs that they okayed, that they said they would be fine with, sections four to six, number four C, number eleven and number four eight, number two A and section six point two. And those are the changes that we made, which are also available on the town website in the subdivision regs that are part of this public hearing. Um, does anybody have any issues with those particular sections that they wanted to bring up? I know that Jared has some additional, he and Rose have some additional subdivision language that has come out of some permitting issues that they have.
Um, again, with the definitions, um, in particular of what they call a connector. Um, but that's something that Jason and I and Chris Callan will have to discuss uh, to make a proper definition, I guess.
Okay, but when, did you have a concern about, um, after subdivisions are made and subsequent building takes place on those particular lots, I guess subdivided?
So, basically.
That you wanted them to come back to the D R B?
We're talking, um, Article Four, section four point two, number seven is disclosure of subsequent development plans. Um, and I'll just read what's in here now. Um, whenever a subdivider submits a proposal for development on a minor portion of a parcel, the board may require a general indication of the intended uses of the remaining portion of land. Such an indication would include access type of use, intensity of use and phasing. Um, basically, what we would like to see is, um, some additional language that states, um, if there is a lack of information or failure to provide adequate information about future development, then at the time that development occurs, no matter how long it is, five years, twenty years down the road, they, uh, the developer would have to go back to the development review board and amend the subdivision that was, um, processed through, through that particular D R B hearing. Um, and then the amended subdivision would show the development and at that point, they could go over the drainage, the, you know, lighting, slope and, and all the other things that, you know, entail bringing forth, um, an initial application.
And was there also concern for like fire safety and traffic flow and subsequent development?
Yeah, so those would be reviewed at the time. So, you know, somebody just divides a lot into three or four parcels, have no plans to build on it. At some point in the future, um, anything outside of what they were originally permitted for would have to return to the development review for further scrutiny. Um, and, and here it's to the subdivision bylaws with regard to, um, section, I think it was like section two A or J.
How does the board feel about that change?
Can, can you, um, repeat just the first part, the changes you were actually?
Um, so I scribbled it a little here, that so, um, any lack of information or failure to provide adequate information about future development would require the applicant to return to the development review board to amend the subdivision and show that development. So, somebody has a hundred acres, they divide it up for their kids, their kids in twenty years now want to build on it, they would have to go back to D R B and get permission.
So, what's included in the subdivision permit now, other than?
If you show a building envelope, then you show intent to build. But sometimes people don't do that and, um.
So, wouldn't that fall under the building permit when they pull a permit to build on the, then subdivision?
But because there was no previous developments, it would have to get reviewed again.
As it, the subdivision?
Um, yeah, as an amendment to the subdivision. It's not just a new building permit, but it would be an amendment to the subdivision that includes that development at that point in time.
But that original subdivision permit created a conforming law.
Yes.
So, then why would you have to revisit that? Now you have a conform, you had a subdivision permit to create a conforming law to our bylaws and now twenty years later, you wanna put a building on it and you have to get a permit to put a building. get a permit to put a building on that conforming law, and that building has to conform to our bylaws. So why would you then have to revisit the subdivision if it's, you're now just looking at building a building on a lot that's already conforming?
Okay, technically, that's correct. If you show a building envelope with nothing else, then it would, should go back to the DRB. If you say you're gonna build a single-family home, and then your, you know, future generations decide to build a multi-unit, it should go back to the DRB.
Wouldn't it for the, for the structure?
Um, yes.
And then, so depending on the structure that's put on, there could be, for like drainage and storage and stuff like that?
Right, but I think those standards are held to a little bit higher focus in the subdivision process versus just a building permit, an over and counter building permit. So in the future, even if the future applicant does meet all the regular over-the-counter zoning permits, there's always a chance that something else may get put in that is not found out until after the fact.
So building that's built without knowledge?
Uh, people do it a lot. People come back to us and they say, oh, by the way, we put another bedroom on, or, you know, the driveway on the other side. That kind of thing. So, you know, at that point, it kind of reassures the process is maintaining its adherence to zoning bylaws, subdivision bylaws, pardon me.
Okay, so, but if someone builds something that they didn't tell you they were going to build, there's no deterrent against that other than?
Violation.
So what's-
So we want to stop that. We just want to see them come before the board again and just reassure the town and the village that the plans were as they said they were.
Could the subdivided parcel be challenged at that, the land subdivision? So I'm trying to separate a permit from subdividing land and building a building, right?
So if they're just subdividing and showing no development, the consensus was to have the developer come back at the future date to make sure that the subdivision building development just adheres to all the criteria in Section 2.
Yeah, and that would hap, but that would happen though anyway with the building permit, would it not?
I'm not sure. I don't think so. I don't think there's as much stringent criteria for the building permit. We have setbacks, we have a little bit of drainage, maybe. We have coverage, how big the building can be versus the square footage of a lot.
Yeah.
But there's other factors that the subdivision regulations may cover in more detail than just a plain over-the-counter building.
Can you give an example?
No. Um, I have to let Mr. Alden speak first.
Well, the chair will recognize Mr. Alden.
Ryan sort of touched on some points. This is concerning because it seems very invasive and not clear. Yeah, I'm not sure what they're sort of grabbing at here, but if I have a piece of land that I can legally subdivide, and I legally subdivided, well, I started the process, and I now have conforming lots that maybe I sell, maybe 20 years down the road, I put a house on it, it makes no sense to me, and I don't see what the purpose would be if I'd have to go back and revisit a legal subdivision that I did many years ago. If I have conforming lots and I want to build a house, I pull a permit, and it fits all the criteria, setbacks, heights, fire safety, you name it, why would I, why would I have to be encumbered by going back, it's not clear in the explanation, to revisit a subdivision that was legally approved?
To assure the DRB that you would maintain what you were approved for as far as all the development and regulations.
You weren't approved for any, you would just approve to subdivide it just like it's a piece of paper. So I subdivided it at the time with no intention to develop. I sell them, someone else decides they want to build a house, now they're gonna go onto my subdivision permit and be challenged by that? That would seem like a, like a stretch, I'm not sure what the end result would be.
It would just be another review, it wouldn't be a challenge, and if there were issues like neighbors, for instance-
Well, neighbors can always speak.
That.
A neighbor can always challenge.
Okay, let's not just have a conversation between you two guys, yeah.
So a neighbor can always challenge anything.
The chair's gonna recognize Noah.
If there's issues with, like, a building itself, why not beef up a building permit? Because if it's subdivided land, or, like, ultimately, all the land was subdivided at one point, what's the difference between a one-acre lot that was subdivided at one point or not? If those, you know, those neighbors or all the other, those things, why not catch it all and just change that building permit versus specifically for subdivision?
Does any other board members have comments about this?
I guess, I just have a question. If someone were to subdivide and then, and not build or change it, and in 20 years, there's a plan to build on the subdivision or part of it, is it likely that something would have changed to affect that building permit? Is it possible?
Sure, it's possible if the original applicant showed, you know, that they intended or didn't intend to build anything, or intended some sort of development.
So what, I, my question is, when we're subdividing land, why does an intent need to be claimed?
So, might be muddying the waters. My understanding of the disclosure of subsequent development plans standard is basically so that you're, you know, what sometimes happens is somebody's got 100-acre chunk of land, like, oh, I just want to subdivide, I want to create a lot for my kid. Well, then, you know, two years later, oh, I want to create another lot for my other kid, oh, my grandkids, you know, and it sort of goes down that path, right? And so you're trying to have a more cohesive idea of how to develop that full 100-acre piece. So if, when you create the first lot, you say, hey, well, what are your future plans? Let's make sure we talk about your future plans so that you're not building, you know, four different really long driveways, let's build one access road to make it more efficient use of land. So I think that's the idea of this provision in general terms. I'm listening to the commentary, I guess what I'm wondering is, you know, one of the other things that happens a lot is a subdivision gets approved, you know, it shows the driveways, the utilities, it probably shows a development envelope or a building footprint or something like that. 10 years down the road, somebody builds a house, it's not in the footprint, it's over here. And I guess I'm wondering if maybe that's what the DRB is-
We want to make sure things like that don't happen, like grandpa shows development for a single-family home, then grandchild comes in and wants to build a three-unit residence. They, I know what you're saying, it would get caught at the building permit phase of it.
Yeah.
And it's very easy just to refer them back to the DRB. Well, we would like to see that it does happen.
And I, and I, and I agree with that, but so what would the, so say someone's gonna build something that isn't gonna conform to that lot, so it's, you're denying a building permit, you're not then going back and changing the, you can't change the law?
What if, what if things are overlooked, two minds are better than one, or, you know, a second set of eyes?
So redundancy?
I think that's probably the best case that I can present.
So does the board want to add that language to our subdivision regs?
How many, how many DRB hearings do you have a month right now?
No, we're not gonna send them all to DRB, just one. Well, although doesn't have too much land left to subdivide, but they're out there, and we want to make sure that it conforms.
Well, let's make, I'll make a motion to add the language that Jared's suggesting that subdivided lots may have to go back to the DRB if they're, how do, we'll have you through the wording. Anyway, I'll make that motion. What was your exact language? I'm writing it down.
Well, I didn't write it down, but I said, lack of information or failure to provide adequate development, future development information would require the applicant, or may require the applicant, to go back to the development review board to amend the subdivision.
Okay, so if there's lack of information or failure to develop, what's the rest of it?
Or failure to provide adequate development information.
Failure to provide adequate development information.
Or future development.
Development information, for future developments.
The applicant, the applicant may be required to go back to the DRB.
The applicant may be required to go back to the-
To amend the subdivision, so it's really not about the building permit, it's more or less making sure that subdivision that was originally permitted, originally approved stays the way it was approved originally.
May be required, wait a minute, the applicant may be required to go back to the DRB, what was the rest of it?
To amend the subdivision.
To amend the subdivision.
Previously approved subdivision.
Previously approved subdivision. Okay, so this is what, approved subdivision. Okay, I'll make that motion, if I have a second? No, I don't have a second.
I was thinking, if you're gonna make that motion, it would seem to the very end of it to go back for non-approval for the subdivision because they already have approval for the subdivision.
Right, to amend the subdivision?
Or to amend the plans, the structure plans, however, however you want to say it.
It's not changing the original subdivision.
You're not suggesting-
Amending it by showing development.
Right, you're not suggesting that someone come back and reapply or get a new subdivision, you're not suggesting that, okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna read that again. If there's a lack of information or failure to provide adequate information for future development, the applicant may be required to go back to the DRB to amend the sub, the structure plans for the subdivision.
No.
Is that it?
I don't know, structure plans-
No, that's not what he said. Previously approved subdivision.
Previously, oh yeah, I have that here, okay. So required to go back to amend the previously approved subdivision. That is the suggestion that Jared's giving us to add, and where does that get added into the subdivision, exactly what article, what number? Not, well, maybe we'll see if the motion passes first.
Yeah, right, Article 4, Section 4.2, number 7.
Okay, I got the 4 and 7, but I didn't get the 4.2, Section 1.2, number 7. Okay, so Jared is suggesting we add that to the subdivision regs that we're already making changes, well, are making proposed changes to tonight. Do I have a second on that motion? We've got no second, so I think it's gonna die.
Well, can I, can I start a question? So would a, could a example be, you have a subdivided lot, which, with drainage and access planned, but now someone tries to, is gonna build a building in a different area of that lot, and the drainage may have to be changed as a result of a building being in a different location? Is that something you're looking to address with this?
That's, that's part of it. I, I don't want to give a specific example, but there's an pending case in environmental court right now that could have totally been alleviated had they gone back to amend their subdivision and not just come across with it.
Do you, does the zoning, do you look at that when people file for building permits? Is that, is that a part of the building permit application process where you say, okay, now you're building a three-unit building on this lot, we're gonna go back and look at the lot improvements and see, and see if everything works?
You know, for an over-the-counter building permit, we don't look at as many things as the DRB does when doing a subdivision, such as wetlands, flood hazard areas. We do, you know, slopes in excess of 15%.
But don't you have to, to issue a building permit, look at these things?
We do.
So, so why the redundancy? So it's an additional DRB hearing for someone that's looking to develop or build anything, you know, something that's gonna be addressed potentially twice?
But that could alleviate, you know, problems and costs down the road for everybody. Parties, towns, village, everybody.
It's, it's, it seems to me, it seems to me like that's something that should be considered in every building permit that comes across the desk, is what effect is this gonna have to the lot?
But, you know, people don't always build what they apply for.
That's a separate issue, yeah.
But then there's no deterrent for that. What deterrent other than a penalty?
Places have had to be torn down.
DRB with your plans for your, to develop on your previously approved subdivision. That's, that's a deterrent.
Can I get a second on that motion? Okay, we're gonna move on then.
All right, could you, somebody please second it, and you can vote it down, it looks better that way.
Okay. We don't, yeah, if you don't make a second, there's no motion. Yeah, we can't get the motion to go through, then we're gonna, sorry, Alicia, mess up your notes. All right, so, I would entertain, are there any more subdivision public comments on subdivision regs? Mr. Allen?
Alden.
Alden, I'm so sorry, I'm writing it down right here, so I do not forget.
Don't worry about it. Just a question to the last meeting, and I don't know if it contains this, but there was some question about some terminology that we discussed in the last meeting about infrastructure in the subdivision, I don't know if that's included in this specifically, like, infrastructure, I think was, was one of the terms, and some other, some other infrastructure. We didn't have definitions on it, so it was tabled, so I'm curious to see.
Well, in the last meeting, Jason had added those definitions at the end, at our last meeting where we decided some is required hearing, those definitions have been added from-
Pedestrian facilities, what else?
Pedestrian bicycle facilities, was that, what were the definitions for those?
Okay. Anything else? All right, I'll entertain a motion to send our changes to town of Ludlow zoning and flood hazard regulations, Sections 2.20, 221, 224, and 227, and the changes we've made to town and village of Ludlow subdivision regs, Article 4, Sections 4 to 6, number 4C, 11, and 48, number 2A, and section 2 point, I mean, 6.2. It's a mouthful. So moved. It's exactly what it says in the public hearing, Alicia. Okay, and can I get a second?
I have a second.
Second from Genie, is there any more discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Any opposed? All right, I am going to close this, this public hearing. Are you still?
No.
Okay, I'm gonna close this, a little broad, can you go? Okay, I'm gonna close this public hearing, and I'm going to, oh, we're just running over by three minutes, so not too bad. I'm gonna open up our special meeting. I gotta call it a special meeting because I wasn't sure it was gonna start exactly at six o'clock, and that's in our bylaws. And our special meeting called, I'm gonna call the meeting to order, roll call by secretary, recording secretary?
All members present.
Opening statement by chair. I do have one. Okay, welcome, it's nice to have citizens here today. Your comments are welcome at any time during the meeting by raising your hand, being recognized by the chair, except during our work agenda items which are seven and eight on our agenda tonight. We also may ask for citizens' comments before voting on a motion during the discussion. There's no point, however, in being repetitious, once we've heard it, it's been noted, and we can move on. I encourage all board members to comment and ask questions throughout our meeting. Tonight, our board will only take citizen comments in the beginning and at the end of the meeting, so we may get the work done that we have been asked to do by the select board and the village trustees. Right, so consideration of any changes, additions, or removals to the agenda? Okay, seeing there none, comments from citizens? Any comments for citizens, before we get started? Okay, moving on. Approval of minutes for January 21st, 2025. I do not have anything. Does anybody have any considerations? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 21st. Can I get a second?
We'll second it.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I didn't vote. That's how it was.
Okay, we're here. The minutes are approved. Short-term rentals registry recommendations. Okay, our task this evening is to make our recommendations for short-term reg, for short-term reg, oh geez. Short-term registry for the village and town of Ludlow. So we're gonna get started. I researched, um, neighboring towns and similar towns to ours, and I sent you guys all a chart which Jared cleaned out for me. Thank you, Jared. Got your fitting it all in there, because there's quite a few more registries since the last time we looked at this last year. And I also made a few calls to the people that are actually involved in running these registries, and it was pretty funny because the first thing each of them sent to me was, "Good luck." Um, so we're gonna come out, we're gonna go right down the list, and we're gonna come up with our proposed ideas for registry for short-term rentals in Ludlow. And we're gonna stick to our, and not get sidetracked. I read Suzanne's letter to the journal and we're gonna keep from getting sidetracked on other issues. Right, so if you can take a look at your chart, it should be in here. Okay, the first decision for our proposal would be, we've already said we're gonna do, they've already asked us to come up with ideas for registry. So the first decision would be how many days, how many days, um, would constitute a short-term rental in our, in this registry that we're proposing? Does anyone from the board have a?
Yep, so we've already kind of started this, gone over this before, and it was, this board might, uh, well, Jean, were you? And at that time, no.
No, that was.
But, so to rehash this, you know, again, a building becomes a commercial building if it's rented for one day, safe fire code, so, you know, to kind of rehash this stuff.
We wanna stick to our one day a year or more?
Well, that would follow safe, safe fire code, so, you know, and I would just think that we really need, before we continue through this list, what's the mission statement here? The mission statement is fire and health safety. Right, so rental, so again, we're still calling it a short-term rental registry. It should just be a rental registry for all rentals.
I don't wanna go down that. We were asked to come up with a short-term registry ideas. We're not gonna go down that road because we go in circles around it. We don't get anywhere.
There's not, it's not really circles. It's pretty factual.
Talk about long-term registries, we're gonna talk about that at another time, but this meeting is gonna be about short-term registries.
So we're not, we're not worried about keeping all rentals.
Yeah, we're worried about it, but we're not gonna do it tonight because we're gonna try to accomplish this task tonight, okay?
Okay.
And not get sidetracked by that. All right, so, um, sounds like it needs to be one day or a year or greater. Owner op, owner, operator availability. Last time we said the phone and email would be required from the owner or the designated professional or the rental agency. That would include the owner address. The email and phone would be required for the registry. Do we all feel that?
Well.
Is necessary?
I have a rethink on that.
Okay.
Because I, I was reading, I read through what everybody else does, and I did like the idea that you could put on, um, that they have to respond within such and such amount of time, because you can have their number, but if they don't respond and there's an issue, you have no teeth in it.
I like that idea.
So whether it's.
Twenty-four hours.
Like twenty-four hours, or, you know, some of them say twenty-four hours a day or a thirty-minute drive, or, or, you know, just something of, I think ability to respond within thirty minutes is a little stringent. But I would say, you know, what if it's a flood? What if it's a fire? That they, there needs to be at least twenty-four hours response.
How does everybody else feel about that? Is that something we're uncomfortable with?
Sure.
Yeah, I agree with that too. So within twenty-four hours, response.
I would leave everything that and then response within twenty-four hours.
And if they don't respond within twenty-four hours?
They get fined. I don't know, we'll talk about that later, about recourse.
That is, it's, it's a good thing, though, to have a.
Yeah.
Because I saw that some would say, you know, one offense, two offenses for different things, you know?
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah. Okay, occupancy. Um, last time we talked about this, we said two per bedroom plus two more, which is kind of sort of a standard I've seen from other peoples.
And another thing that I saw, again, a rethink. One of them said the bedrooms have to match the lister's card.
I like that.
No, that's.
That's not possible.
Here's the problem. Like that one bedroom that goes all the way around the house and has twenty-four, you know, has a total of twenty-four with bunk beds and everything, they're calling that one bedroom.
But you have eight people, you know, eight occupancy, so that takes care of that.
Yeah.
So it's the occupancy of the room, and so you may have a bedroom that the fire marshal would allow a higher occupancy in. If it's a room of that size with enough egresses on the first floor. So a lot of, some of this stuff would be discretionary. The reason why you can't mandate it match the lister's card is because a lister's card could be erroneous. They could have never been let into the building, and it's just a guess from walking around the outside, so.
I kind of thought they were getting at that because of their wastewater and water situations.
I also like that, too.
That they were, you know, they couldn't have more people than they had.
Yeah, but if you're in the village, that's, that's unavoidable because you're in a village, water and everything. But if you have, you know, if you're out of the village.
So, I mean, is that's.
Wait.
No, we're not taking, yeah, we're not taking, we're gonna, we'll get your comments afterwards.
Select board representative, no?
No, we're gonna, we'll get your comments at.
Aren't you?
During the citizens' comment.
Which you were tasked.
Oh, yeah.
Try to stay on task.
So he, uh, Noah was tasked by the select board to.
Oh, you were the DRB rep? All right, what is your question?
Why, why are we getting into dictating occupancy when fire and safety dictates occupancy? You can have a four-bedroom home, and then we're saying, okay, cool, that's ten people. If you don't have a sprinkler system or additional means of fire and safety, that's not gonna pass fire and safeties. You have a two-bedroom place that's sprinkled up in winter place, you can sleep more than that. They have certain rules that, that do that, but I think getting, focusing on the safety side of things, and like, as soon as you jump into like dictating occupancy, it gets into some nitty-gritty stuff where, you know, there's other, there's things that already dictate that. Um, I think it's, I think the town is overstepping once we get into dictating that, that stuff, and it gets hairy.
Okay, I would like to do that. I would like to dictate occupancy, and I especially like the part where this is more than eight has a special.
So we, we're going away from the rule of safety then.
Now, we also are gonna address safety in this.
I think, I think what Terry's trying to get at here, Noah, is the fact that, um, there have been situations where the occupancy is really overcrowded and becomes unsafe. So how do we make it from a safety point?
So if we get them on a registry and we're able to inspect, our fire chief is able to inspect these buildings, then they can give them an occupancy, a lot of it. But if we don't know about them, we can't have these interactions with the homeowners. So once you start saying, "We're gonna dictate occupancy just based on account," but the fire marshal or fire chief may go in and say, "The occupancy could be higher based upon the facilities of the building." That should be, that should be something, because again.
Start with occupancy just because I think the fire safety thing, I mean, you may only be able to check it once every five years. And, you know, they may change it, but right after they leave.
So, so just trying, I, I think we need to leave an occupancy requirement in here, but maybe it says some, it could refer it to as determined by a fire marshal.
So it gets restrictive, so now, so now the town says this home, this home can have a ten-person occupancy. The fire marshal says it can have fourteen. Who's right?
I still want it there because I don't, I don't want people shoving twenty-five people in one bedroom.
So twenty-five, so that, so, so that would be stopped because it'd be a fire, uh, occupancy based upon the recommendations of the fire marshal or the fire chief doing that inspection.
I still want it in black and white, so people know.
But if we wrote that.
So then what's our?
Where it says, it says occupancy is determined by the fire chief or fire marshal.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, I'd rather have.
That's safety, so.
I think there's a reason why every single other pe, person here has a number here. We have one, two, three, four, five towns that have a number, exact number here. I think it keeps them from having twenty.
It, both, both would, both would do the same. It just allows room for nuance. It allows room for people to use their property safely to the, the highest of their ability, but it also keeps them safe. So, you know, these.
It creates a fire hazard.
How?
Because after they leave and they shove all those people in the bedroom, at least you have something on black and white that says you should have only had two people.
They're gonna, they're gonna get that from, they're gonna get that in black and white from the fire marshal.
Then there's the, but the more than eight special requirements, that falls into that category, which is why we had that there. So that falls into there. I still think we should spell it out in black and white.
So and again, and that gets back to my original point, what's our, the intention of this is fire and health safety, not to restrict the use of property. Right? Is that a fair statement?
No, I don't think that's a fair statement.
So, and so we are.
Guidelines, so they're not shoving twenty people in the house.
So you wanna, so which would, which would be restricted under being unsafe?
Which is unsafe to have more than two per bedroom.
Noah's not. Yeah, I, I do think you can have more than two people in a bedroom.
You can.
I mean, I've seen bunk room, you know, like two sets of bunk beds or something.
Well, that's why more than eight has special requirements. I feel like we covered it there.
So again.
Let's take a consensus on the board on occupancy. Okay.
I, I just wanna say this before we do that.
Yeah.
Is that one of the concerns that I have about, um, any kind of registry or any of these kind of rules that we, um, try to adopt and try to do it in the best interest of safety is, and maybe we'll get to this later, but if, if you're gonna have the rules and the regulations, it has to be enforced. And so the fire chief, who's only one person, and hopefully gets some assistance, I mean, it's not gonna be possible for that person to inspect all the Airbnb's short-term rentals that we have in a short period of time. So.
No.
I'm just, I don't think so.
It can be, it's not a short.
Why do I want, I want to have the numbers there for?
No, go ahead.
So, but it still can be done. There's not, it's still something that's feasible. I mean, you know, we look, in my profession, we look at thousands of properties a year and take actions and inspections and create values for them. So to think that the fire marshal, if having a targeted list and not just aimlessly walking around and looking online, right, that's the whole point of the registry is to create a targeted list so that we can identify and then inspect and enforce and educate those properties.
So the fire marshal, we could say, we.
So in this case, because we have a fire chief and we're moving to potentially more full-time or act, uh, more salaried, um, you know, staff, we could do that in-house, and it would satisfy, and then the, the state would be real happy with that because now Ludlow's off the state's docket. Now, whether or not that's worked out between, um, the town and the state as far as compensation, I don't know how that works. But I mean, I think the state would be pretty happy if we were to say, "We're gonna do this all in-house. We have our own staff that's gonna take care of this. The fees for this registry is gonna fund that."
Heard that conversation, so thanks for enlightening me.
But I mean, so now we can do this in-house. We have a registered, registered list that we can go and look at and start that process. You know, how long will that take? I don't, I mean, it's hard to say. An fire inspection takes longer than, you know, making, doing an assessment, but it still can be done. But I think just the, this is gonna get bogged down, and it's not gonna happen if we start being restrictive in any way. And the whole purpose of this is so that our volunteers that keep us safe, we're not marching them into known danger, and then we'll not have any more volunteers to respond when buildings catch on fire. So when I, if I was a volunteer fireman and you hear the tones go off at two-thirty in the morning, and you're going up the mountain, man, I'd be petrified because I know I'm walking in, I could be walking into anything, anything, and I, I mean, so I wanna solve that problem. Occupancy will be solved, can be solved by what's safe dictated by the fire inspector, not something that should be dictated by this board in a way to be restrictive to how people can use their homes. So that's, that's, I think, as a board, we need to come to a consensus on what is the mission statement of doing this? And what's the mission statement that's being sent out from the select board for doing this as well?
I, I still would like to see occupancy. Am I the only one who wants to see occupancy here?
Well, I, I hear, and I understand what Ryan's saying about, um, occupancy being determined by a fire chief or a fire marshal, because that makes sense to me. Like, they're the ones that really know. But my reservation is that I don't think that we could get everybody approved by next, next season, next ski season, because we have a lot of short-term rentals. So is there some kind of a, a compromise we could do as we're trying to onboard all of these short-term rentals that says something like, um, occupancy is determined by, um, wastewater, water, or number of bedrooms, or something like that, until inspection occurs and is determined by fire marshal, fire chief?
I'm fine with that.
Something like that. I mean, because I, I can't imagine, what do we have, eight hundred?
Over eight hundred, between eight hundred and twelve and hundred.
Could get eight hundred inspected, like, in a summer.
Yeah.
I just don't see that happening.
That's what I, that's what I'm nervous about.
And I, and I think we might have to have like kind of a gap, like, once you're registered, we're gonna do it by this, but once the inspection comes, then that's the real determination.
Yeah, I like that.
So is the concern the, the one and two bedrooms? So those are based on the occupancy count that's gonna be below your eight, which is gonna trigger.
The special requirements, yeah.
Special thing. So you're concerned that people in a one-bedroom are sleeping eight people, or a two-bedroom are sleeping eight people?
Or what Brendan showed me is they took the whole third floor and made bunk beds all the way around it, and.
In a two-bedroom?
Yeah, they called that one bedroom. One bedroom, bunk beds all the way around this loft area with like a hole in the middle.
And they slept eight people?
That was, they slept twenty people, and that was, that was called a one bedroom.
Special.
It's called one bedroom.
Well, they need, they need fire and safety because their occupancy.
Yeah, because they've got higher delay.
Right, so that's why it says a greater than eight special requirements. Okay, so what I hear is saying, we're gonna stick with this, but we're gonna say, um, until determined by a fire, fire inspection?
So I don't think it's realistic to think that we could say we're gonna start a registry and within one year, we're gonna be compliant. This is, I think, most be a three-to-five-year plan.
That's what I said.
Yeah, me too, which is why we have the guidelines to start with, yeah.
We start with some occupancy, like less than eight or more than eight, basically. And it doesn't really have to be determined by bedrooms. It's lesser, more than eight.
Which I thought we had required by greater than eight special requirements, anyway. Okay, we're moving on to yearly cost.
Have we finished with this?
Oh, we haven't finished?
We need the, we need the actual wording that you wanna put in it.
Um, this is what I would suggest. Occupancy, two per bedroom plus two, max of eight. Three bedrooms times two plus two, if they have three bedrooms. Um, greater than eight special requirements, um, these, these, this occupancy applies until determined by the fire marshal.
Or fire chief.
Or fire chief. You know, not only that's a, but, you know, as far as inspecting per bedrooms too, like Plymouth, they have a person hired and an assistant hired, and they actually go and inspect the number of bedrooms, the numbers of beds in each room.
Yeah, but they're a lot smaller than we are.
Yeah, they are, and then we have fifty or something.
Exactly.
Okay, is that, are people comfortable with that wording? Genie, I didn't, are you weighing in, Ted?
I think it should be more generic and just say if the occupancy is less, if the occupancy is more than eight special requirements are.
But it already says there.
Yeah, but take out the two per bedroom and things like that, because bedrooms can have three or four or whatever people in it. Many bedrooms do.
Okay, so what is it gonna, what is your suggestion it says?
Just say, just have it be if it's greater than eight occupancy special requirements. It means special requirements, and then occupancy, I don't know, like initial, like initial.
Until the fire marshal can.
Right.
Go in and do his assessment.
Exactly, what does it say?
So basically, what that does is if it's less, if it's eight or less, they go forward and eventually they're gonna get tiered in with an inspection. But if it's an occupancy greater than eight, they're gonna be fast-tracked to be inspected by a fire chief or a fire marshal.
But what if they have one bedroom? You want them to have eight? They have one bedroom?
Right. Off the top of my head, if the bedroom is structured so it can sleep eight, I'm trying to visualize.
Off the top of my head, if the bedroom is structured so it can sleep eight, I'm trying to visualize that. But I think I'd be okay with that. I mean, I'm not.
Like a dormitory style?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're saying occupancy eight, greater than eight has special requirements until determined by the fire marshal. That's what we're saying? Occupancy up to eight. Ted, what do you think?
We need to deal with the fire marshal. We've been talking about this for five years.
Yeah.
And we're no further than we were five years ago. I'm, I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure the answer. I, I, I know both sides, or all sides, and I'm sure I know what everyone's thinking in this room, and we're all thinking a little different.
Yeah.
I mean, you have to kinda go with the fire marshal thing. In my mind, it's, it's kinda just a I hate to go to the common sense thing, but here we are, back to common sense, because that's what's gonna dictate.
Yeah, which we, which everybody has that.
And we can, we can sit here and wording by Judy, good, good, a lot of good wording, but it comes back to that one thing.
Yeah, will it happen?
How do we revolve around that one thing?
Why don't we say something like occupancy determined by fire chief or fire marshal for everybody? Regis, like whatever we wanna call it, rentals that, that register an occupancy greater than eight will be prioritized for inspection. Right? Does that make sense? Cause those are the ones that we really get concerned about.
Which I believe would, would happen anyway.
Alicia, why don't you just stop writing till we come up with it?
We're just gonna keep changing it.
Yeah, I, I don't just, you know, I'm just kidding. I'd like to. Does that, does that make any sense, what I'm trying to say?
So the select board is asking us to do this, right?
And the village trustees, the last thing, the last.
So, so, right, so if they're asking us to do this, we need to do the best that we can. I like that. And it's up to them to figure out a way to enforce it, to hire the staff, to get them. So let's do what we need to do and um let the select board deal with it.
I agree. They were just making proposals. They're gonna have the last say, as they do with everything that we do and the village trustees also. Okay, so the last thing I heard was occupancy up to eight. Um, greater than eight will have.
I just said occupancy greater than eight will be prioritized for.
Yeah, but what, what, we don't have any occupancy.
Well, everybody has to get an inspection. And, 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 well, and their occupancy determined by the fire chief or the fire marshal.
Yeah.
And.
What you said was occupancy determined by the fire chief or fire marshal. Rental occupancy greater than eight will be prioritized for inspection, is what you said.
Thank you. That was pretty good.
I think, right, is that good enough?
Alicia, I'm gonna look at your notes to get ahead in my thing.
Good, because it's still, because it's being dictated by.
Spanish in there.
Yeah, cause it's being dictated by the fire, fire chief, fire marshal.
That's what I'm looking at, but I'm just trying to get us there.
In my mind, has to go to that. And, and all the other stuff will get worked out through the time of that.
My, my chief goal in having occupancy number is to keep from having what Brendan showed me that third floor with twenty-four people sleeping in there.
Get us there.
The rental registers.
And it will get us there. There should be one per bedroom.
The rental registry is going to bring you to that. Like I said, we started five years ago talking about this.
Yeah, we did.
We've sort of really haven't amounted to a lot with it. We, we tried, but that's gonna get dictated by the fire marshal. We're, we're not gonna dictate any of that.
Right, and we're taking proposals anyway.
And, and to put a number and start trying to break it down into different sections and the amount of people, let that kinda take its own course in my mind. That's, that's the way I think.
Okay. Yearly cost. Last time we talked about this, we had a tiered per bedroom cost, an owner occupied lower rate and an annual fee. I noticed when I did this re- research this last time, the last few weeks, that now people also have a registration fee um added, so that's something that people didn't have before. Um, so if you go down the list and see what other people's ideas are, I thought we could just come up with some ideas and have a consensus about what we send along.
So my, my thought with this would be a fee per unit, a set fee per unit, and we can differentiate between homesteaded and non-homestead properties, so hosted versus, so if it's owner occupied, you know.
I like, I love that idea.
You know, so that's something where, but other, if we try to break it down further than that, you know, and if you do a tiered cost per bedroom, that, that doesn't, that's, that gets away from what we're trying to do.
Plus, yeah, if you got a bedroom with twenty people in it, you know.
However, I, I also think another consideration is um how many days a year it's being rented out? If it's, you know, like fourteen or thirty or less, whatever, you know, like a, a minimal amount. Like, so you've got people that have a, a place, you know, maybe on the lake, and they rent it out for a month or two in the winter to offset whatever, you know, they don't do a lot of rentals compared to the ones that are basically a business and they're rented out all the time. I think there's a difference in what the people that are only renting it out, you know, maybe their lake house two or three weeks a year or, you know, their condo or whatever compared to people who rent uh regularly and, and don't really use it. And I know the, the owner occupied kinda goes there, but I do think there's a difference. If, if they're, if it's an investment and they're just owning to make money, that is a lot different than people who own it and use it and rent it out occasionally.
See, there's a huge discrepancy between like London Dairy has a hundred and fifty dollars hosted, but five hundred dollars unhosted.
Right.
Which is what they're calling owner occupied.
But if, what's owner occupied? They're there all the time and they have a unit that they rent out. But I'm talking about what if.
I don't hear you about the cottages.
Yeah, like the cottages or, you know, people who own a ski house and maybe they rent it out a couple weeks in the summer.
Maybe they rent it out only Christmas week.
Right, right.
That's how, how do you, how, how do you determine that? How do you enforce that? I don't know.
That's a good point. How do you know for sure?
Now, now you've got, now you've got to have another layer of enforcement to how many days or how many weeks a year do you rent it? I think it's gotta be simpler than that, at least to start with. Just make it simple.
I hear everyone, well, I hear Ryan and, and myself and I hear Jeanie and Judy saying that we wanted difference between owner occupied and host, unhosted.
So again, I say, I say homesteaded, so you file your HS one twenty-two, one forty-four form every year.
And that's not.
Because now that's something that I, we get from the state of Vermont, that's vetted by the tax department and not us. So that's something, so that's okay. Your homesteaded property, this is your.
Can you suggest a fee? You think would be good for homestead or homestead property?
Well, you know, so the cost overall, I think we'd have to kinda, I think we should structure it, but not come to a, like a dollar amount because we need to talk more logistically with who's gonna implement this and start looking at those costs. And remembering that when Granicus um did our, they mined all of the individual listings two or three years ago, there were, there were more. There were eleven hundred and three individual listings. So, so, which is good, obviously, for having a higher volume, you have a lesser fee per unit. So, and I really think we should stick to the per unit and keep it based on safety and just keeping the registry functioning as opposed to trying to say again, yeah, you know, we've already said it's, she rents it for a day.
They kinda said that last year too, we didn't put it down.
So you've got fee per unit and you have owner occupied homesteaded fee.
So, yeah, so.
So I have a question for Noah. Noah, do you think that the select board and the trustees would want to be the ones that put a dollar figure on it? Because you're the ones that are gonna have to enforce it.
I think I think our focus is safety, not generating revenue. If generating revenue was the goal, that's a different story, but I think figuring out how it's going to be implemented and what are those costs, it's not something that, it needs to pay for itself. So if Granicus, that cost is seventy-five thousand dollars, okay, we need to cover that. If we're wanting to hire a full-time um inspector, okay, that, that's what it is and that, you know, you take your, you know, thousand properties, we need to bring in two hundred K for that, okay.
Exactly, that's, that's why I said that to you, because we can make the recommendation, but we're just like making, you know, we're just pulling figures out of the air. Whereas you guys really need to do it so it covers the costs of enforcement.
Yeah.
It seems like Granicus are a lot more expensive than like Plymouth is doing it with um a full-time person, no, they're both halftime people. Two halftime people and they're paying for ten thousand five hundred dollars for a software program instead of Granicus. They're using a software program, which was all over the journal people were up in arms about.
So maybe we write fee to be determined by select board and trustees.
It might need to be determined by the person hired.
They're the ones that have to, they need to do that.
Okay.
Or a town manager.
Determined by.
By cost.
Determined by administrator.
Just create a budget first.
Yeah. Yeah, right. Good point.
Why don't we say fees determined by budget?
Create a budget.
Yeah, exactly, that's, that's where I was.
Budget for the registry program.
Just making up numbers.
You're doing good.
We're doing great. Knock box. Last time we said no, cause Judy talked to a fire official about it and they said it wasn't necessary.
Right.
But did I hear?
They said it was necessary for like big buildings, like schools or whatever.
If there's a fire, if there's a fire panel inside the house, so that would be discretionary by the fire chief, I would say.
Okay, discretionary by fire chief, I like that. I still discretionary.
I can't read that.
Okay, zoning areas. Last time we said all zoning areas it would be allowed in. We're still on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Parking on-site only, you can't park in the street. We tabled the insurance requirement. It seems like a lot of them have the proof of liability and casualty insurance with an STR endorsement. That's true in Plymouth. Chester has a million dollars for rental unless already part of a hosting platform that is equal to or greater than a million dollars. You got too many zeros there. Um, Killington's short-term rental insurance with stock homeowners insurance with short-term rental endorsements. Wyndham didn't require it. London Dairy, thousand dollar, I think it was a million dollar liability unless covered by hosting platform for equal or greater amount. What are we thinking there? Last time we tabled it.
I, I think liability and casualty insurance with an STR endorsement. If they want their house to burn down and they don't have insurance, that's their problem, but if people are in it, that's still their problem.
I agree with that. I'm good with that.
But I don't think we should put a number on it, you know, like, I just think.
So just proof casualty, liability and casualty insurance with STR endorsement?
Cause I think they can get it through their platform.
Well, that's what a lot of them said, because it's already part of the platform, it just has to be equal to.
Right, but if they have it with their platform, they just show that insurance, right?
What do you think, Ryan?
My suggestion is that we do not include this at all and, and, and people see, you insure your home. Again, cause that gets away from what I, our mission statement is, is health and safety, so.
But I know those people that were in not last fire, the condo lost everything. They lost laptops, they lost iPads.
So how is that now the responsibility of the town?
Well, I'm thinking more of the casualty and the liability, like if someone, if the house isn't disrepair or, and the person gets hurt or.
And the chimney's not clean.
Or the chimney's not clean and there's a fire and there's a fatality, I think that those renters deserve to have some protection.
Exactly.
That's where I go with it.
So why, why is the town dictating that, that, so that if you rent your home in that regard, so that's where we can educate and we can say this is the type of insurance that you should have? But to dictate this is the exact level of insurance you must have to rent your home in Lublow.
I didn't say that. I just said proof of liability and casualty insurance with an STR endorsement. That's different.
What do you think, Jeanie?
I, that's like Ted, that would be common sense, you would think. You wouldn't have to write it down.
You would think, you would think.
What do you think, Ted?
I'm not sure about it. I don't like the values. I don't like the numbers, but I don't wanna get into that.
Do you think that they should have casualty insurance at all without, without being a number on it?
You, you would hope.
I would hope you wouldn't have to write it down.
Yeah, that's kinda the way I looked at it.
Okay, I hear most of us. Yeah, Noah, would you like to weigh in?
What do we require that uh the inns and hotels have for?
Yeah, we're not gonna get sidetracked on that. We're gonna stick with short-term rentals and what we want for them in particular. We're not gonna get sidetracked by that. Cause that goes around and around and around.
Our bars and restaurants, do we require them to have insurance?
I'm, we're not gonna get sidetracked by that. We're sticking with short-term rental stuff. Okay, so I hear a majority of us saying we've no number, but liability and casualty insurance with STR endorsement? Am I hearing that correctly?
Right.
Not Ryan.
No.
But I hear that from Jeanie and Judy and I and Ted, as long as there's not a number attached to it, cause he thinks it's common sense that they should.
I, I actually don't. If I had to make a commitment, I wouldn't, I would say I, I would not wanna have to tell people that. I think it's their responsibility. I definitely don't wanna deal with the numbers.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say we had three for that and two not for that.
And the select board, they can always take that out.
Yeah. State fire inspection required. Last time we said they were gonna have to fill out a fire safety certificate.
Well, didn't we cover that up under occupancy?
People have changed their stuff on that. Plymouth now requires a um CO needed from the fire marshal for over eight occupants. Under eight, fill out and submit your health and safety form.
Yeah.
A little background on that, Terry, right? So basically, under eight or under, you can self-certify. Um, eight or more, you require that fire and safety inspection and permit. As of right now, the way I understand it, they are, if you fill the form out online for eight or less, eventually they will get to you. If you call the office, they will not schedule an appointment for a property eight or less. I think they're very overworked for division of fire and safety, so I think requiring that for anything eight or less is, is gonna be hairy. Um, but there is that, the state does have that self-certification. Now, hey, we're up to code, we have GFCIs, we.
Seems like most of them require that to do that same thing. Okay. Um, and I did, the fire chief did say at this meeting, he was there, that he would get the training, he would get the training for his people too, to do those inspections, as long as, you know, it was possible. Um, so are we, are we agreeing with that, that less than eight self-certify, more than eight fire marshal inspection?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so.
Okay, so basically Plymouth. Do we wanna say that you need to be inspected every five years and open to random inspections, like what stock says? Wyndham says comply with state health, fire and tax and environmental regulations.
I, I believe that for now and when this gets off the ground, we have the fire chief weigh in.
Okay, so I'm hearing us say.
Can always look at it.
I'm hearing us say Plymouth, I put Plymouth on there.
Cause by, in five years, they will have it. Which is self-certified.
Right, on the last sheet, whoa, we are cooking, man. Um, noise party restrictions. I notice that people that had them before don't have them now. And I think it's because of, you know, that they felt discriminated against. Everybody doesn't have noise and party.
I looked it up.
Okay.
On the VSA, state statutes. Thirteen VSA, section ten twenty-two is, this is like the, this, this is a state statute, so we might just reference it, but it says a person who between sunset and sunrise disturbs and breaks the public peace by firing guns, blowing horns, um, that's considered unreasonable noise. I'm just paraphrasing here. Um, that's considered unreasonable noise. I'm just paraphrasing here. Um, on the Vermont law on rentals said prohibits unreasonable noise, which is noise too loud for the time, place and nature of the noise. Includes noise that is audible between apartments or houses between ten and seven. So we can just reference that.
Well, that's what.
And that's pretty reasonable. Ten and seven, you know?
Where's this last one? That's what they did in their town. Um, Peru. Peru said, um, state standards.
So I would just ask why, how does this make us more safe and our responders more safe?
I think we should just refer to our noise.
Why even?
Well, I don't know. Somebody who lived in a neighborhood with a short-term rental, kind of like above my house.
Yeah.
Where the renters routinely, any time of year would set off fireworks till two o'clock in the morning. I would say, yeah, I would have loved to have something to, on the books to complain about.
And I know George Tucker also has that situation with people constantly partying all night long right next to where he lives.
So that, that sounds like a village or town ordinance to me and not something that belongs in a rental registry.
Say, reference our noise. Since people are, don't have noise or, since they're saying reference state standards, we can say reference our noise. Cause we do have that in our, um, village.
All right.
My opinion is it has no basis for even being in the registry at all.
Cause you don't live next door to one.
Yeah, you did. You'd probably have a different opinion.
I don't see how, so how does having noise restrictions in a rental registry change anything? It, all it does is put more onus on the registry itself. It's gonna make it more expensive when these rules already exist somewhere else to be enforced by public safety officers.
Registering, the owners find out that they're not, they need to do something about their tenants.
I'll tell you, my, my daughter rented, she didn't rent a place, but some friends of hers rented a place on Amherst, which is under the Plymouth regulations. And they started to have a party there and the owner called them up and said, you have to leave. Cause they don't want to be shut down. And Plymouth will shut them down for making that kind of noise.
Right.
And they, you know, they begged and pleaded and said, you know, we'll be, we'll turn the noise level down and they were allowed to go back, but I mean, they take it seriously.
So you could argue if it's health and safety, maybe it's health and safety of the neighbors as well.
Yeah. What do you think, Jeanie and Ted? So what are your thoughts?
I'm thinking it's gonna be hard to enforce. I'm not opposed to just saying refer to the village or town ordinance.
Yeah.
But it's difficult to enforce.
What do you think, Seth? You agree with that? Okay, refer to town and village ordinance. Last time we were stricter.
Well, we said, yeah.
We're real.
We've gotten realistic. Okay, um, fines, fines for violations and non, non-registration.
I think that that's the curfew of the select board and the.
But you think that they, do we want to recommend that they do?
Oh, we can recommend. Okay.
I think there's absolutely no reason to register without a fine.
Right.
I mean, a lot of them said if you advertise and you don't register, you're gonna get fined. So we're gonna leave that at discretionary support.
We definitely suggest a tiered. You know, once you get to it.
Two offense.
Last, yeah, last time we said a hundred dollars a day for infractions and under registration, a hundred and fifty for violation. Number two, three fifty for violation number one. Yeah.
Yeah, so I think we should suggest a tiered structure, but leave the dollar amounts for once we realize what the budget would be.
And the enforcement of it.
Yeah, suggest a tiered structure based on days.
And I do think that if they get into the, um, repeated violations more than three, then maybe they can revoke their ability to rent. Cause I don't know what town has that.
I think they all have that.
No.
Oh wait, this one is right here. It's right. It's on Woodstock. Non-registration, fine is five hundred dollars. Second offense, five hundred dollars. Third offense, eight hundred dollars. A rental officer may revoke your ability to rent for twelve months. What's interesting, I called them in Woodstock and they just, they have a village in a town like we do and they just voted, the village voted to not have it anymore. And the town still has it. They were saying in the town office that it's very confusing.
The register?
Yeah, because now, you know, the village doesn't have it and the town does. And they can revoke your ability to rent for twelve months.
You're gonna start.
You gotta get it, not enforce it.
I don't know how you'd enforce that one.
Well, that's what Granicus, places like Granicus, that's, that's what they do. They do that part, if finding and enforcement.
Okay.
Company involved. So I don't, I think we should leave that up to the select board. What do you guys think?
Yeah.
They're gonna use a company or software or out with the employee.
Yeah, I'm sure going to that.
Because that, that's gonna determine your budget as well.
Up to the boards. Look at that. Look at the whole thing. They're gonna be proud of us. They're gonna get sidetracked. Stuck for guns. Okay, moving on. What do we got next? Okay, yeah, I just wanted to mention that I did go to the select board meeting and, um, they did sign our, thank you, Noah, they did sign our municipal planning grant registration form. And I signed it and Cherry signed it and, um, where it's at is Jason, Cherry's filling out the application and Jason's already done. We're gonna go, go with the one that he had because that's one that they approved. And it's in the works. We're just gonna get him a municipal planning grant to work on Lublow town zoning.
Awesome.
And we also need to do the Lublow town plan before two thousand twenty-seven. Both of those things are done. And Jared mentioned, or Rose mentioned at a meeting I had with her and Aaron, um, that also we have to take a really good, hard look at subdivision regs eventually. It doesn't seem to have a timeline, but Jason was saying it hasn't been looked at in years. And we made this little tweaks this last time.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's more work to be done with that.
Yeah, so. No stress, guys.
The work never goes away.
The town plan's actually fun. I think it is. Okay, other business. Oh, wait, no, municipal planning. Next month's agenda planning, quite of aggressive. Oh, and my point with these short-term rental thing is to, I'm gonna ask to get on the agenda of the select board and the village trustees, just to share with them what we came up with, hopefully for March or if not April. I know town meetings and stuff, the town meeting probably changes when they.
It might be April because.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Cause that would be, that would be something that we would have an open hearing on.
Always reorg and.
Oh, yeah. We wouldn't have a public hearing on that because it would be an ordinance. So that would be something that we wouldn't have to bring to public hearing, but they would bring to public hearing. And I, I kind of assume the person that, if they hire somebody to do that, they would be, that would be the person. Last time we did this with Brian and Ted, we were on the board. Um, we wrote up the application for it. We wrote up all this stuff about it. But I assume the person that they hired would do that kind of thing.
So let me, Noah, maybe you know this, um, in, in the budget that's gonna be approved, is there money in the budget for enforcement and hiring someone for the, for this registered? Okay, so, so how are we, how are we gonna go forward with that, with what we just talked about?
Well, I'm in the shirt with the select board and it would be, and the trustees, I'm gonna try to get on their next meeting agenda.
Right, but if there's no money in the budget, how, how can they?
They're supposed to pay for it, so.
Oh, all right.
And that's why we said let the select board determine according to the budget that, that they see for the company and everything else.
Okay, so you need to hire somebody who figures out the fees and everything.
Well, and obviously this be a conversation at the, at the time and place before with this, but obviously to get off the ground, there's gonna have to be an investment by the town. And then to get up to even say seventy percent of compliance, you're not gonna be receiving fees from everybody, you know, and immediately. So it's gonna be a phased in. So that's something to consider that to get it off the ground, it's gonna cost money upfront.
Yeah, hopefully we'll get paid back for that. Okay, so, um, can, I have a motion to bring our ideas on short-term rentals to them? Do I need a motion for that? Probably.
I think you left out opinions from the audience. You said that would be at the end.
Oh, yeah, that's gonna be under citizen comments. But can we, can I get a motion to?
I don't see it on here.
Yeah, other business, board member comments.
Yes, I see.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody? Did I take it to the select board and the village trustees what we decided tonight?
Yes, yes, please do.
Having public comment before you make a motion to send something.
Right, well, I have that as an option, yeah. Okay, let's have some public comment. Alice, you got any to follow?
Oh, actually, what you did say, uh, what you did say, Terry, was, uh, comments are welcome to raise hands, but not for seven and eight.
Right, cause I wanted to be able to stick with the subject and not get sidetracked. But we will get, we'll definitely get to the public. But I don't even think I need a motion just to go to them and share what we came up with tonight, right? Do I?
Let's get it.
Okay, so let's move on. We already went to municipal planning grant. Next month's agenda, no, we're gonna get to you, Alice, I promise. Under citizens' comments. Next month's agenda planning is pretty aggressive. Not sure how much of that will get done, but we won't go past seven thirty, I promise. Um, other business, board member comments. Y'all commented out?
Like tiered citizens' comments.
Citizens' comments.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I don't think that people understand that Noah was appointed by the select board to be like a liaison.
Oh, yes.
And that's why, um, that, you, you did hear, you, well, you were at the select board meeting.
I heard it's like, yeah.
He said it himself.
Yeah.
Sorry, no, I did not hear that until a little while in.
So, do you see that chair over there for next time?
Now, now you're gonna be without a side joke.
Okay, we are ready for citizen comments. Let's go. Mister Alden.
All right, I'm, I'm giving one just as an observation and, you know, you can reply or not, but during this discussion, what sort of was an observation to me was that the chair of this board felt adamant that something was in here. Conversation was shut down, even from the select board liaison. But if it was something that the chair didn't feel strongly about, conversation was allowed. So that was just an observation, an observation that I made on that, which.
Thanks.
You know, should be allowed one way or another. You know, this, this conversation was not a conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Garvey.
So, um, I have a few notes. First, I wanna say bravo for taking this on. It's needed. Um, it has been a long conversation. It is very complicated and difficult topic. It's, you know, it's tough stuff and that's why, in my opinion, all these other towns are trying to do the best they can. And there is no, hey, they got it figured out. It's really working, no problems, and everybody wants to duplicate. Everybody's trying to find the balance. And it's, it's not easy stuff and I, I recognize it. But I also recognize, um, you know, as a professional, it's needed. As a citizen, it's needed. And, um, so I just have a couple of notes to share. Um, under the idea of yearly costs. Um, well, I understand, I think what the goal is, is to not overburden, um, our year-round owners. And so by determining homestead or non-homestead, whether or not what kind of fee structure they have, that could be problematic because you do have homestead. Um, citizens that rent when they're not here in the winter. So I don't think that really works for you. I think you have to go with hosted and unhosted. And hosted means that someone like myself, I have an apartment upstairs. I'm, I'm a hosted, I'm hosting. I'm here. My boots on the ground. Versus, um, non-hosted would be I'm complete, I'm off-site. And I believe that's what some of the other registries do. I think when you go into the, how they're taxed versus use might be, might get into trouble there. Um, the registry, so I agree with Noah. I've had my conversations with like, uh, Landon Wheeler, Ben Mellen, Michael Messer, our local, um, fire marshal. And, um, yes, they are all begging that our registry does not include, um, a requirement that every single rental get inspected, but that people be allowed to self-certify. Um, and there's a whole protocol with that. So as a registry, they would have to, um, I imagine, they would have to submit their self-certification. That self-certification, I imagine, would get passed on to our local fire chief, fire marshal. And so they would be able to randomly check on those, um, self-certifies. Yes, everybody's worried about the places that pack them in. And, and that's not like a new thing. People have been packing people into C houses for a long, long time, right? Um, the state, you know, what Ryan says, the state recognizes you rent your house for one day, you are subject to all of the fire and safety, uh, laws that Vermont has in place. So the cottage on the lake, it doesn't make it, it really, it's not a difference. And, you know, rental is a rental. That's how the state looks like, looks at it. Um, the, uh, the idea, like, so when you come on, you're talking about implementing this. So there are a ton of owners already that have fire inspection certificates. They already have them in their hand. And my understanding, talking to Landon Wheeler, is that they will honor a certificate. If someone has a certificate, they are going to honor that. So I think it would help to, you know, to phase this in a little easier, quicker, is to, when they're registering, allow for a certification that's up to five years old. So all these people that just did this in the last, that, because they're not gonna retract those certificates, is what I've been told. Now, if an owner does a reservation, if they put a bedroom up over their garage, if they do an add-on, if they reconfigure their house and they get a building permit, somehow, some way that can trigger them needing to, um, have another fire in the city if they're a rental. Because that's where, that's where the fire, the regulations, you know? Unless they've substantially changed the building, it's not required to have it re-inspect, is what I've been told. Um, so I just wanted to share some of that stuff, um, you know, just being in the field like Noah and talking to these guys and just being like, you know, day-to-day dealing with it. Um, the, um, occupancy, I just, cause it came up before and you guys thankfully got through it and it didn't, you know, get onto your recommendation. But I just mentioned this in case the select board starts to have the conversation. But when you start talking about occupancy, I agree, you start getting into this gray area, like, how are you gonna enforce that? Because someone can, um, move beds around. We do them in our house all the time, right? People move their beds around, move the beds around, whatever. So as long as your overall occupancy is following what the Vermont state rules are, it, as a town can step out of it. Because it is very clear now, and trust me, there was a gray area where the inspectors were allowing, um, they would sign off on ten people. If it was safe for eight and it was reasonable access and our egress, they would allow for ten. They have shut it down statewide. Statewide, they've shut it down. To their credit, it needed to happen. Because it's too much of a gray area, right? So now, up to eight, you can self-certify. Anything over eight has to be inspected. And to get over eight occupancy, you're gonna have to put some things in place. And it could be a ten or a twenty thousand dollar commercial alarm. It could be a sprinkler system. So you're already gonna be addressing those one bedrooms with the tiny beds, like. Just, just by following what's already in place with the state. And I think it takes some of the heavy burden of us locally for policing because you're partnering with, you know, Vermont Department of Fire. And you're not doing something contrary to what they're putting out, so. But I did wanna say thank you and you guys are doing a great job with this. And, um, lastly, the only other thing I'll, I'll bring to mind on occupancy is when you get into permits, when you say town, town water, town sewer, two people per bedroom, a high, it works out. When you get into permits, trust me, it's a whole different deal. Because you can pull a five-bedroom permit. You can pull a, a five-bedroom permit that has an eight-person occupancy. You can pull, pull a five-bedroom permit that has a ten-person occupancy. So again, that's not a purpose, because those permits have changed. And, um, I think going with. And I think going with fire and safety is just like your best bet. And that's, thanks for listening.
That was a lot of good information, thank you so much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Alice, would you like to comment?
No, thanks.
Oh, come on. I appreciate you guys being here. Jared, would you like to comment?
I have a question regarding the difference between what's considered short-term and long-term. Is there a threshold that divides the two terms?
I was thinking about that when Suzanne was talking, because we did say at the last time we looked at this, that more than thirty, like, less than, I know Plymouth has that, more than thirty is considered long-term.
Yeah.
More than thirty?
Yeah, so the state, again, refer to the state, right? So they collect rooms and meals tax up to thirty days. Thirty days and over, there's no rooms and meals tax.
Which is what I heard you say too, Jerry, to thirty. Do we want to add that to our, the board, do we want to add that to our? That, you know, greater than one, less than thirty? I mean, more than thirty is...
So more than thirty is considered, is considered long-term.
Thirty consecutive, thirty consecutive.
There's no rooms and meals.
Right.
Required.
It's considered long-term, like the cottage.
Well, but that's to one person.
Right.
That's to one person.
Consecutively to one person, one family.
Correct, one lease.
Right.
Yeah. Is that something you want to add or not?
Or maybe, maybe there's a little bit of definitions that need to be put just on the bottom.
Well, on here, you know, on, on the top here, if you schedule and whatnot, do you, do you have what we, the permit restriction required is short-term and long-term, and so you?
We're just short-term.
Long-term law?
Yeah.
Just, so again, the, the mission of this is safety of all rentals, of all people.
So we're thinking about seasonal rentals and things like that, Ryan?
Saying like all rent, it's a rental registry.
No, I don't want to do that.
But why?
Because we weren't, I'm not opening that can of worms, because it changes everything else.
Why does it change?
Because those are the places that are packing and showing people that are the most dangerous places, not the long-term rentals. And we don't want to, I don't want anything to discourage them either.
It's not discouraging them, it's making sure that they're held to the safety standards as everybody else.
Charging them more for doing it, and they don't need that. So, Noah?
So, but there's...
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
So again, there's...
Not going there, that's a whole nother ball of worms.
How does it, how is it irrelevant and not worth discussion? So you're saying that if you rent a house for thirty days, you don't care about it being safe? That's what you're saying?
No, I'm not saying that.
Yeah, you are.
I'm not having, we're not having a problem with them, we're having a problem with short-term rentals.
How do you know?
Because there's one, there's ones that people would have died on the condo, on a HMO, that's not a long-term rental.
I just think, good points, but we were asked to look at short-term rental registry. If, if the select board wants to change it to another term and have it being rental registry, I'm okay with that. But for, for our task right now, we were asked to look at short-term rentals.
True.
Noah raising his hand.
As a resident, who's lived in the village for a number of years, my apartment on West Hill was a fire last year, was so. During the flood, fire marshal came in to my apartment on Pleasant Street, not up to code with smoke detectors. I think it's a very serious thing and it's not paid attention to with long-term. I am definitely, on the select board, would push for this to be the same thing. Is there anything you would change based on what you're suggesting for short-term versus long-term?
Fees, lots of things.
Other than fees, what?
I don't want to go there right now, we can, we can talk, if we want to talk about that, that'll be a whole nother night and a whole nother set of friends, you're saying?
Because I think we did a good job of like really narrowing it down to like really solid points. And I don't see a whole lot of, you know, I don't see anything there that wouldn't be positive for long-term renters. If we want to say, hey, we really want to support long-term housing, let's come up with a way, hey, we're going to structure this so it's free for people who rent to long-term residents, and we're subsidizing that through the fee structure for the short-term. But I, I do think from the safety point of view, I've been in some rough apartments in, in town, and I think paying attention to these people that live in, live and work in Ludo and rents is important.
Well, that, you know, that might be a change you guys decide to make then.
Suzanne, just a comment on that, just to, because I think part of this is a little bit of understanding, like, I think I said before, so if someone, like, so let me use the example of the place that Ben showed you pictures of or wherever the guy was.
Brendan, yeah.
Brendan, sorry. So that was a short-term rental. That just as easily have been a long-term rental for employee housing. It could have been a seasonal rental, and they're selling shares for the weekends and running it almost like a ski club. How someone's using it today isn't really necessarily indicative of how they're going to use it for them. So if they're doing short-term this year and next year, they might do a seasonal, you know, they might do employee housing. You know, I, I don't get it either, to me, a rental is a rental. If you want to, you know, be lenient with and encourage, you know, people to rent to year-round people that are, yeah, they feed. But provide the education, provide the opportunity, provide the, you know, it's an, it's an opportunity for education, that's how I look at it, so.
Okay, are there any more public comments, or Mr. Alden?
I have a sad one, I know your discussion here, short-term rentals, to the points there. There's always a narrative around this that the short-term rental folks are making a million dollars a season. And that folks that rent long-term are losing money. And that's really, that's not, that's simply not true. We've had a lot of discussion about, well, we don't want to charge them because they're doing long-term. So if I have a unit and I rent it for five hundred dollars a night, every weekend for the three-month period, I've made twelve or fifteen thousand dollars. If I have a three-bedroom in town that I rent for three thousand, I've made thirty-six thousand. So the narrative that, that folks that rent long-term are going to the, you know, the soup kitchen is just, it's not true. It's, it's sort of based upon saying, well, we don't want these folks in the long-term to jeopardize those long-term rentals. Having them set up eventually would not jeopardize that. And the narrative that they're not making any money, and only short-term rental folks are making a killing, is, is just not true. It's not true, thank you.
Kate, I don't see any more hands up. Alice, are you sure?
I'm all set for this.
Okay, finally got out of that snowdrift, huh? Hey, I will defend a motion to adjourn, so move. Second?
Well, second.
We are adjourned.